Let's call the order, the city council meeting for December ninth, 2025. If you'd all stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call?
Keefe Offer?
Here.
De Haven? Spruill?
Here.
Dobree? Randall? Lewis?
Here.
Medina?
Here.
Mayor Medina is with us on a phone call, so she will be listening in and voting. So do we have an approval of the agenda?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Keefe Offer?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
De Haven? Lewis?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
The consent agenda, the listing under consent agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or council member may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda at that time prior to council's vote. If a resident or a council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. A, approval of the minute, meeting minutes from November twenty fifth, 2025. B, approval of the expenditure list for the December ninth, 2025.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Randall? Lewis?
Yes.
De Haven? Keefe Offer?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Public participation. Individuals may not comment on items that are on the council agenda during the public participation time. There is no limit to the number of speakers, although public comments will be held to an overall limit of thirty minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person. You may only speak once and may not cede time to another commenter. If anybody has any comments that they would like to make, you can fill out a card at this time. We'd ask Bonnie Anderson to come. And if you would state your name and...
Good evening, I'm Bonnie Anderson, two four nine oh seven, Road M Cortez. I just wanted to introduce myself to you guys today. I am a candidate for the county commissioner for next November, District One. I wanted to say that my principles are transparency, respect, and collaboration. With that said, I think it is very important that all three municipalities and the county work closely together on shared challenges such as housing, infrastructure, and collective long-term planning. So I had some questions for you. I know you can't answer them right now, but if you want to contact me later on, I would love to listen to you guys. I wanted to know what has worked well with you guys and your working relationship with the county so far. I also wanted to know what hasn't worked well and maybe things that we need to tweak. But it's a pleasure to be here and I'm looking forward to listening and learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. I see no more presenters. We'll move on to item number four, which is presentations. We have 2025 Employee Anniversary Awards presented by HR Director Matt Kachner.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Drew Sanders here, City Manager. I'm going to be working with Mr. Kachner to accomplish this important task. This evening, we have a list of several years of service award recipients throughout the city, ranging in years from five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty, and we have one forty-year recipient. I would like to recall their names. Several are here, some are not, but as we call your name, if you can go up to the dais on the other, or the podium on the other side where Mr. Kachner is, where he will give you your city gift. And then I would like to invite the council, if it's your pleasure, Mayor Pro Tem, down on the floor to perhaps congratulate them.
We really like our employees and our law enforcement, and it would be my honor to come down and greet them as they come up, and I'm sure the rest of the council would too.
All right, I will read these out as I just mentioned. If we can move down to Mr. Kachner and then approach the council, starting with Andrew Archer, Patrol Officer, Police Department. Richard Baker, Water Treatment Plant Senior Operator. And by the way, this is for five years of service. Next, Carrie Booker, Public Works Secretary Receptionist. Tanya Goodall, Detective Administrative Assistant at the Police Department. Vernon Knuckles, Chief of Police. Kyle Kuhn, IT Support Technician. And maybe just a quick point of order, maybe we can hold our applause until we go through the whole list of a given year and maybe give an applause then, it'll save us some time. Next is Charles Osborne, Police Detective, Police Department. Jeremy Patton, Airport Director. Carla Ross, Patrol Officer, Police Department. Darren Uptown, Public Works Operator. And Sarah White, Communications Technician, Police Department. And that is all of our five-year recipients. Thank you. Moving on to ten years of service, starting with Taylor Kason, Police Records Technician. Next, William Hill, Public Works Senior Operator. Brent Jarman, Police Patrol Sergeant. Rahili O'Manard, Patrol Lieutenant. And David Potter, Public Works Senior Operator. And with fifteen years of service, David Rucker, Buildings Maintenance Technician Two. And that's it for fifteen years. Moving on to twenty years of service, Sarah Coffey, Payroll, Sales Tax Administrator in the Finance Department. David Shack, Account Clerk, Accounts Receivable Technician, Finance Department. Buck Woodman, Police Detective. And Judd Yench, Maintenance Mechanic and General Services. And with twenty-five years of service, Nathan Hoffman, Facilities Maintenance Foreman. He's not here this evening, and that's our only twenty-five years, but that's quite an accomplishment. Thank you. Thirty years of service, Andy Brock, Assistant Chief of Police. And Matt Kachner, Director of Human Resources. And this last one, I am positive this has got to be a mistake somehow because there is no way she's old enough. However, Lori Milich, Police Executive Assistant, forty years of service. Wow. I'm pretty sure they hired him when you're four years old back then, so anyway. That concludes our years of service. Thanks, everybody, and all of you who were not necessarily recognized tonight, thanks for all you do for the City of Cortez.
Can I, so Mayor Medina here, apologize I couldn't be there tonight, but I just wanted to thank you all for your serious dedication and service to our community. You're the backbone of this organization and just really thank you so much.
We're going to move along to four B, which is the 2024 Independent Audit Results, presented by Randy Bailey, our Finance Director.
I'm not sure we want to do audit after that, but here we are. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor and Council. See if we can get the slides up. Okay, I wanted to spend just a few minutes discussing our 2024 annual audit and the results. We are a little bit delayed this year because of some unfortunate occurrences during the year, but nonetheless, here we are to provide you with a brief overview of the results of the 2024 audit. Before I go too deep into it though, want to just remind everybody on the values of our annual audit. It does provide us that independent assurance that our financials are free of material misstatements and compliance with, and in compliance with generally acceptable accounting principles. It also provides transparency to the many stakeholders and financial readers that have an interest in how our city is doing and how we're performing fiscally. It also fulfills statutory requirements. And the part that I really enjoy about audit, and I know that probably sounds strange, but it really is a good time to do a deep dive and assess how we're doing, how our controls are performing, and get any feedback from the independent auditor as to how we can improve. And to me, that's incredibly valuable for our overall finance team and for the overall city at large. A brief overview of the audit cycle, not many folks know what all goes into this, and I want to take a brief moment to thank the entire Finance Department because it is a heavy lift. It's about a six-month process. January and February is what we call our super busy season, and that's when we are heads down doing all of our account reconciliations, adjustments, entries, and really starting to make sense of the year, if you will. March and April, we then turn into final fund balances, final adjusting entries, and do really the lion's work of the audit testing, and we also perform the single audit if it's needed based on the federal grant threshold. In May and June then, we switch gears, and it's really about audit wrap-up, producing the ACFIR, and submitting all of the information. So as you can tell, it's a pretty drawn-out process. It has its up and down in terms of effort levels, but it is a big lift, and we're very, very proud when we get what I will go to the final punchline is, an unqualified opinion or a clean result. And so that is exactly what we received for 2024. We had zero deficiencies, and really not a lot of feedback from the auditors. And so I'll continue to follow up with them because again, it's that improvement piece that we always want to get, and they usually provide some great insights into how we can get better. We also did need to do a single audit for 2024, and that is expected to wrap up this week, so I can definitely provide a memo to council if they desire as to the findings of that single audit and how well we did, but again, it is ongoing and it should wrap up either this week or next week according to the auditors. I will also say that we submitted our ACFIR for a Certificate of Excellence Award from GFOA, and I did receive recent notice that we were approved for final review, so that's pretty exciting stuff. Don't know if we're going to get it or not. Again, I'll follow up with council if we do because we'll definitely want to brag about ourselves, but we're hoping for a good result there, and we believe our ACFIR is solid, and we're hoping to get that award this year. So with that, that is really all I have, and I'll open it up for any questions.
I have no questions about the audit report, Randy. I'm pretty familiar with that. I used to do that in education, so. What I do have questions in regards to is the auditor. How long have we used that company and our contract?
Those are great questions, and I will definitely appeal to Drew if he knows those, our city manager, if he knows those, he answers right off the top of his head. I don't know those exact figures, but I know that we have been with Atlas for a number of years because they got us caught up on the backlog of audits, so I know that they've been around for a number of years.
Yeah, it was 2021 when we first engaged them, but one of the things that attracted us to them is that we could, they're big enough that, as you know, best practice is you don't really stay with an auditor much past four to five years. We're at four years now, and they're big enough that we would want to go to a different auditor within the firm to, you know, get a new set of eyes on our books. So that is something that we will discuss for this next year.
Thank you.
I have a general question as far as clarification on one of your statements under discussion. It says that the Finance Department ordered a single audit as a threshold of $750,000 in federal grant expenditures has been reached. That means we have a federal grant threshold of $750,000 that we can receive. Is that what I'm interpreting, or can you just tell me what that means?
Yeah, the threshold for single audit, it actually, 2024, it was 750,000. It's actually been increased to a million, but yes, in 2024, we did have federal grant expenditures that exceeded $750,000, and so that triggered this special engagement to run the single audit.
Thanks.
Yep, you bet.
Mayor, do you have any questions?
Nope, thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy. We'll move on to number five, public hearings. We have none. Six, unfinished business. We have none. Seven, new business. We have none. We'll go on to seven A, which is a Resolution Number fourteen, Series 2025. Council will consider approving Resolution Number fourteen, Series 2025, a resolution certifying the 2026 mill levy, and our presenter is Randy Bailey, the Finance Director.
Good evening. Before you have Resolution fourteen to certify the mill levy for the 2026 budget year, I'll just remind council that this is, the way that this is calculated is we look at two different calculations. One is a 5.5% increase year over year, and then one is the taper limitation using an inflation rate. We take the lower of that and use that to set the mill levy, and that's exactly what we did in this case, and it was the taper limit that was the lower, and so that's what we're advocating for moving forward. I will say that the inflation rate used was 3.6%, and that was derived from the September 2025 State Economic Report out in forecast to the Budget Committee, so we felt that that was the most prudent to use moving forward for the forecast. So what we're looking at is a total of $135,786.07, and that represents a $6,208 increase over the prior year. And so with that, I would suggest that council approve the resolution and we move forward.
Thank you for presenting that, Randy. I think it's pretty straightforward with what you presented, and with that, if there's no other discussion, I move that council approve resolution. Resolution Number fourteen, Series 2025, a resolution establishing the mill levy for the 2026 fiscal year and certifying the 2025 mill levy to the Montezuma County Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Dobree?
Yes.
De Haven?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keefe Offer?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
We'll move on to seven B, a Resolution Number fifteen, Series 2025. Council will consider approving Resolution Number fifteen, Series 2025, a resolution approving the 2026 fee schedule for the City of Cortez. Our presenter is our City Clerk Danielle Wells.
Good evening, Council. Resolution Number fifteen, Series 2025, would adopt the 2026 fee schedule for all the city departments except for the airport. The 2026 airport fee schedule will be adopted through Resolution Number sixteen, Series 2025, following the review of this revolution, resolution. Attached to the packet memo includes a Resolution Number eighteen, Series 2024, which shows the fees that were adopted for this current year. The items that were highlighted in yellow are the fees which are being recommended by staff to be changed from the 2025 fee schedule. Members from staff are included in the packet, and staff, senior staff is available to address any questions or concerns that council may have. Barring any questions, staff recommends that council approve Resolution Number fifteen, adopting the 2026 fee schedule for the City of Cortez.
Do we have a motion?
I just have to say, boy, it took a, took a long time to go through all those, all those fees, but I appreciate all the directors submitting everything and going through that process and using their advisory committees for input. So seeing no discussion, I move that council approve Resolution Number fifteen, Series 2025, resolution adopting the 2026 fee schedule for the City of Cortez.
Second.
Dobree?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Lewis? Keefe Offer?
Yes.
De Haven?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Moving on to seven C, Resolution Number sixteen, Series 2025. Council will consider approving Resolution Number sixteen, Series 2025, a resolution approving the 2026 schedule of fees and charges for the Cortez Municipal Airport, presented by Airport Director Jeremy Patton.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Recall, in 2023, we established an official schedule of fees and charges with an actual guiding document in place that was not previously being used. As you've seen in the packets previously, and then for this resolution, there's, you know, there's been a lot of updates, just structure really, and then over the years, we've implemented a few more items to that guiding document, right? So in, for example, in 2024, we went to the digital landing fee structure that helps us capture not only increased revenue based on the tiered schedule or tiered, you know, bracketing of weights of aircraft, but also for operations tracking and more, you know, having more integrity in our tracking system. In 2025, we implemented the paid parking system in congruence, or in following the construction of the parking lot. That has also helped substantially with airport revenue for operations. And then in 2020, or for 2026, we're going to update, adjust a few of these schedules in the document. So with that, the, some of the changes we've added, the land, the official land lease nomenclature that wasn't previously in there, that's the guide on our square footage fee for building hangars, and then as we move forward, as more commercial development should happen, you know, we'll negotiate those rates with the potential developer. But our set land lease rate is now in there more descriptive, and we're also going to update the weight threshold of applicable landing fees. We were capturing fees above 4,000 pounds of landing weight. We're actually going to increase that to 6,000, and, you know, initially, there's concern you know, lose some revenue between that four and 6,000 weight, but most of the aircraft in that weight are student training aircraft, privately owned, or community service like fire helicopters, air medevac, that's not based here. And then the increase in our heavy traffic, we've been seeing a very good trend of increase over the last five or six years, especially since COVID. We're still capturing more revenue because again, we increase the fees the heavier the plane gets. That helps offset expenses of the impact of those aircraft on our runways, taxiways, and aprons, right? So we're actually doing a service and a benefit to the operators, like I said, helitack, fire, a lot of those A-Star helicopters, Hueys, Bells, that fall in that weight category, they're already paying land use agreements and fees to the airport through federal and state agreements. So this actually invites more use of the airport despite some high fuel pricing concerns, but we already see, one of the complaints is, you know, that we already got to pay this fee, that fee, and landing fees included, you know, when you're dealing with a smaller aircraft. So strategically in the industry, you know, you don't see landing fees at most busier, heavier aircraft impacted airports like Durango, they start at 8,000. Most airports start at 12,500, so I think we're just kind of finding a compromise a little bit there and welcoming more aircraft. An additional change is increasing the fuel flow fee by .01 cent. It hasn't changed for twelve and a half, thirteen years, something like that, and industry standards between 12 and 30 cents a gallon of flow fee. That's everything that the FBO, when they sell fuel, they pay, you know, a flow fee, anything through the fence, so helitack operators, private owners that bring their own fuel. We're only, we're not raising it by much, but that helps increase revenue over time and keep up with industry standards. Things like key card issuance, ten to 15 dollars, raising it five bucks, those cars are getting more expensive to acquire, and we issue quite a few of those a year now with the paid parking system. Lost key fee, you know, we lose five or six years, so increasing that a little bit offset those costs and the time to deal with that, those issues. And then finally, land lease rates and communication site fees, they haven't changed for over twenty years, 2660, to 30 dollars a square foot, again, industry respective. Those can range between 10 and 150 dollars, obviously the more corporate, you know, shop space, things like that at bigger airports, they break 100 dollars. We're nowhere near that. And then, yeah, so all these, all these help offset some of the expenses for airside terminal and landside improvements, right? So fiscal impact, we'll see some increases in these fees. We continue to see increases in revenue barring, you know, our limited space and use of the airport, so we're hoping to increase some of that. And then barring a major economic downturn, you know, the revenue should keep increasing. Notable increases, again, we're seeing in land, landing fees, parking lot fee, annual passes. Landing fees have essentially tripled with the digital tracking system since we implemented it because we're not doing it by pen and paper, and we had one set fee for every aircraft. Reminder, all based aircraft, Flight for Life, or not Flight for Life, based medical, nonprofit flights like Angel Flight and a lot of the fire stuff, we've been exempting. Unless they're on those fire attack contracts and we were charging those helicopters before, we're getting away from that weight category by going up to 6,000. So, yeah, I mean, in a nutshell, it's basically, you know, implementing land use agreements with federal and state firefighting, that was also not done very clean or organized previously, and we anticipate potentially two new hangar development, private hangar development, and we've got groups coming to us in the next few months to build several hangars, like multiple units. So at that time, we'd work on negotiating a more fair land lease rate with those because they're going to be building relatively large structures, hopefully. So with that, staff recommends council approve Resolution sixteen, Series 2025, approving the 2026 schedule of fees and charges for the Cortez Municipal Airport, barring any questions.
Jeremy, I'd just like to applaud you. You put a lot of effort in this, and what I really appreciate is you making those adjustments to the landing fees. I think that's... is you making those adjustments to the landing fees. I think that's, that's a great change, so.
Thank you.
With that, I move that City Council approve resolution sixteen, series twenty twenty-five, approving the twenty twenty-six schedule of fees and charges for the Cortez Municipal Airport.
Second.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Medina? Spruill?
Yes.
And Mayor Medina, did you have a vote?
Apologies, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Moving on to seven D, bid results for the twenty twenty-six chemical bid. Council will consider accepting and awarding the twenty twenty-six chemical bid to various vendors according to the bid results. Presenter is Casey Simpson, Interim Director of Public Works.
Good evening and happy holidays, council and mayor. For the past couple of years, the cities combined efforts with the town of Dolores, Mankas, and Monizuma Water Company to get the lowest possible chemical bids. Combining the amount of chemicals obviously increases the amount purchased and reduces the cost. These bids were all cost-based in their entirety, so there weren't any qualifications applied. And you can see in the attachments that the lowest bid was selected in each category. It's a pretty extensive spreadsheet, and I don't really know in depth exactly what each chemical is used for. So I can't answer those questions right now, but I can answer any other questions about the bid process. And if you guys so choose, the staff recommendation, or wait, the, sorry, the fiscal impact for Public Works is two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents, and the Parks and Recreation amount is twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents, for a grand total of three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and forty-four cents. And these amounts are budgeted. And with that being said, the recommendation is that council consider approving the twenty twenty-six joint chemical bid to the low bidder for each chemical as shown in the spread, or in the table.
I, I think we asked this question last year, and, and I can't remember the answer, but Monizuma County has been offered to go into this bid process, is that correct?
The?
The county.
Renetation, or?
The Monizuma County with the road department and any chemicals that they may need. I know Mankas and Dolores does.
I'm not sure that they were this year. I know we reached out to the sanitation district because they've got a historical presence. Speaking for myself, I would love to include the county if they so desired, and we may have missed it this year, but I can make sure to do it next year.
Okay.
Casey, by having a joint bid, any idea what percentage we, we save by doing this?
I didn't run comparative numbers.
Okay.
I can look into that as well.
That'd be interesting. No, thank you.
I just wanted to say that for as long as I can remember, we've done a, a chemical, a joint chemical bid, and I think it's really brilliant that all the municipalities can get together, and I think it's an example of, of municipalities, you know, working together and for a common goal. And might not seem big and flashy or sexy or anything like that, but, you know, the fact of the matter of it is that people are working together and to the benefit of everyone.
I would suggest that it definitely benefits the smaller municipalities and shows a high degree of collaboration.
Having said that, I'd like to make motion that council approve and award a total bid award amount of three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and forty-four cents.
Second.
Dehaven? Dobree? Lewis?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Moving on to seven E, bid results for the twenty twenty-six janitorial services. Council will consider awarding bids and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and sign contracts on behalf of the city with two selected vendors for the twenty twenty-six janitorial services. Presenter, Casey Simpson, our General Services Director.
Yes, thank you. The janitorial services bid, or the opportunity to select new janitorial services is offered to each building's staff each year. This year, the Police Department, City Hall, and Service Center decided to seek bids for janitorial services. These bids were, or we did ask for qualifications as well as costs there, so there's a combination of qualifications and costs included in the scoring matrix below. The fiscal impact for these services are included in each building's budget, and the staff recommends that council consider approving the twenty twenty-six janitorial bids for each building as shown below. There are, just to note, there are different, different janitorial service providers, vendors were selected for each building based on those bids received.
Casey, do we know why Wagner Enterprises did not submit a bid for the Service Center?
I did not speak to him personally. I think that the owner took a few years off and then decided they wanted to provide these services to the city again and maybe starting small. The Service Center is a big building and can be muddy at times depending on the precipitation, so it could have been that they didn't want to tackle all three buildings at once.
Mr. Simpson, can you tell us why, why we do this on a one-year basis instead of a two-year basis?
Yeah, we can. If the janitorial services we're receiving are great and we like the cost, then we can renew, I believe up to three years. The, the different building teams just didn't feel like we were receiving the services at the cost that we were paying, or receiving the level of service at the cost we were paying, and thus put it back out to bid.
With you saying that, thank you. Looking out for the city's best interest. Appreciate that.
Well, and the building, ultimately, I would hand it back to the building teams that keep us, keep us in the loop, so yeah.
I move that council approve and award the twenty twenty-six janitorial bids to the following bidders and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a professional service agreement on behalf of the city with each vendor. Service Center, Care Beyond Care Cleaning Services LLC, thirty-one thousand, seven, seven hundred dollars. City Hall, Wagner Enterprise LLC, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Police Department, Wagner Enterprise LLC, thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Keef Offer?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dehaven? Medina?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Moving on to seven F, intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Monizuma County Water District Number One for purchase of treated water. Council will consider approving the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Monizuma Water District Number One for purchasing water from the city of Cortez and authorizing the mayor to sign the IGA. Presenter is Casey Simpson.
Thank you. A little bit of background here, the first agreement was signed in nineteen eighty-six, and then I could, the, the, the next iteration I could find was signed in two thousand and six. There was an automatic ten-year renewal in, in between that. And this is the next, in, in two thousand and six, it was signed again, and then there was an automatic ten-year renewal, so we're now again at a a renewal place for the contract with Monizuma County Water District Number One. This project has been going on for the course of the year with back and forth communications with their board, our engineer, the city attorney, et cetera. And what you have before you is the, the result of that year-long project. The agreement has undergone revisions to update the language and terminology. The agreement has been modified from a ten-year duration with a single automatic ten-year renewal to a five-year term with the possibility of up to three automatic renewals. Billing accuracy is addressed, and the daily maximum water, maximum volume of water deliverable to the network has been increased from two hundred thousand gallons under the nineteen eighty-six agreement to now four hundred thousand gallons. Seven new articles have been introduced covering appropriation of funds, government immunity, data security, and public records, governing law, compliance with industry standards, and other miscellaneous legal information. The recommendation here, or there's, there is a, there isn't a specific fiscal impact attached to the agreement, although the yearly water rates does have a fiscal impact, which I believe is outlined in the exhibit. And that's changed annually, or the water rates are changed annually based on the percent of water used by Monizuma County Water District Number One as pertains to the total of water produced by the water treatment plant. And it's the staff recommendation that council approve the IGA with Monizuma County Water District Number One and authorize mayor to sign the IGA on behalf of the city for this purpose.
Mr. Simpson, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So my understanding is that, that this agreement has them participating in the debt service that we have currently on four, on four upgrades or four projects that we've completed. Previously in twenty twenty-three, they were participating in the same sort of a debt service, but it was only involving two of those projects, where there's been an additional two since that time. Yet the charge per thousand gallons of water right now is less in this contract than it was in the, in the one that was dated in two thousand and twenty-three. Can you walk me through that?
I can do a pretty good job, and if we need to lean on Randy Bailey, we can get more support for that answer. So the overall expense projected for twenty-six went up, and the rate went down based on an increased usage. And the, as we progress down the line of debt service, I believe there's less principal, so those, those numbers all calculated together using Randy's algorithms and math produce the two, two thirty-one. I, I did ask Randy to review those numbers and make sure they are right. And I also spoke to their board chair and president about that and talked to the water treatment plant and internally within Public Works, and those numbers go up and down year to year. They went up by a significant amount a few years ago from, I think it was two thirteen to two fifty, and then back down to two thirty-one as you see it. So I, my, my understanding, it's, it's based on how much water they use, the percent of the total, and then based on the changes to what projects were included in that debt service and where we're at with that debt service, those numbers will change annually. Then I could have butchered that somewhat.
Financial Director Randy's gonna enlighten us here some more.
Casey, you did a great job. There's really four components to it. One of them is built on the actual operating expenses. And so that is the thing that really fluctuates the most, right? The debt service payment is pretty much fixed. The other two components with Dolores are pretty much fixed. And so as, as Casey said, two years ago, it was two seventeen, it went up to two fifty, went back down to, to two thirty-one, and, and it really stems from whatever the operating budget is for that year is what's really driving the variability within that rate. But overall, their usage was up and overall the charge is up. It's just the rate fluctuates because of that operating budget year to year. And that's gonna be dependent on what kind of outlays they have, what kind of repair and maintenance they have, et cetera, et cetera.
So our operating budget for the last year has dropped significantly to offset the two debt services that were retired.
Well, the, the, the debt service has been in play for three years, four years? Two years, yeah, two years, and it runs through twenty thirty-seven, so that's been fairly the fixed component. But basically, the year before, the operating budget was much more significant, which is why their rate was so much higher.
So I'm, I'm following your concept, but my understanding was that, is that previously, we only had two debt services in place. One was for the four million dollar, excuse me, the four million gallon membrane and for the, the filter upgrade in the water treatment plant. That was as per twenty twenty-three. And then now we're actually talking two additional ones, which was the clarifier and the two million dol, uh, two million gallon tank. So in theory, we're doing debt service on four issues now, whereas before we were only doing debt service on two. But yet our operating costs have gone down.
I would need to get, I would need to dissect those projects and what that rolled in. I since it's inception, but in terms of the roll-on and roll-off of the, of the specific projects that you're talking about, I would need to go back and dig into that, and I'm happy to, to generate a memo.
I, I was just wondering how that worked.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And Mayor Protem, council, if I can just jump in right quick. I just want to clarify, those aren't, aren't debts. Those are generally capital projects. Randy will get some clarification there, but we did not incur debt to do those. So just, just for clarification, okay? Uh, well, the debt service that he's talking about, and again, Randy will clarify this, but if you some were maybe not on council at the time, but when the general fund loaned money to the water fund to pay off their debts, now they are repaying the general fund. That's the debt service that they're carrying.
Do we have a motion?
Also, right before, sorry, Mayor Protem, council, before you do this, on, you do have a motion sheet there in front of you of councils of the mind to pass this. We are requesting specifically the Mayor Medina sign this because her name's affixed on the IGA. Thank you.
So we can go ahead and make the motion and pass it, but Mayor Medina will sign it when she comes in.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
I move that the city council approve the intergovernmental agreement for the purchase of treated water between the city of Cortez and Monizuma County Water District Number One and authorize Mayor Medina to sign the IGA on behalf of the city for this purpose. Second.
Keef Offer?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Seven G, twenty twenty-six Cortez Community Support Grants. Award the community support grants as determined by the twenty twenty-six Community Support Grant Review Committee. Presenter, Drew Sanders, City Manager.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, council, so for many years in past, the city councils passed budgets and set aside money in the general fund to support community organization that preserve the and enrich the health, education, and welfare of the community. Each year, these community support organizations may receive a grant to support activities and programs that are accessible to the city of Cortez community and, or encourage development of healthy community organizations. So this year, we set aside thirty-two thousand dollars, and we met together as a committee, and there were two council members on that. That was council member Lewis and council member Randall, and then some staff members and, including Finance Director Randy Bailey and our city clerk Danielle Wells and Wendy Mimiaga, who works in the city manager's office. So with that, the committee put a lot of thought into who should receive grants and so on, but I believe one of our council members has some information that we wanted to share regarding how the committee came to their discussion and how they decided to award.
So this will be shared by council member, by, by myself and by council member Lewis. So the committee met on November twenty-fourth- So, the committee met on November 24th to discuss the applications and to determine the funding recommendations. The city has a $32,000 budgeted for the purpose, and we received requests totaling $161,600, excuse me, $161,411. The, this significance difference meant that the committee had to make some really difficult decisions. We wanted to look at predominantly what provides public benefit and furthers a valid public purpose. Our funding philosophy and the committee recommendations are that with limited resources, our funding recommendations were directed towards the most urgent and foundational needs of our community. We prioritize essential life-sustaining services, specifically addressing food security, medical support, and child advocacy. The recommendations reflect a commitment to supporting our most valuable, excuse me, our most vulnerable residents first before addressing secondary enrichment activities. So, by focusing on these areas, we demonstrate a greater direct impact on mitigating urgent needs and filling essential social service gaps.
And we can, consideration of other requests, we recognize that this approach means we are not recommending funding for youth sports or other important activities this year. This decision was made in part because youth sports organizations already receive ongoing support from this city, such as providing low cost or no fee to city facilities. Examples, waiving rental, field prep fees for youth sports that we provided since 2020. Partnerships for facility improvements. We've had park improvements for the football program, additions of warning track, making fencing reductions at McAndrew Field, soccer goal replacements, starting blocks for the outdoor pool. The city has invested approximately $40,000 during the past three years in facility improvement requests for these groups. We feel confident that these recommendations maximize the impact of $32,000 to meet our community's most critical needs.
Manager Sanders, would you like us to go through the numbered awards briefly?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. I think, you know, they should hear it from us.
Okay, Bill, do you wanna tag team me on this one? So, number one, the Cancer Resource Alliance of Monizuma and Dolores Counties, they requested $5,000, and they will be, we are suggesting giving them $2,500. Okay. The Colorado Pet Pantry requested $5,000, and we suggested a $1,000 gift. Number three, the Community Connections requested $5,000, and we suggested a $2,500 gift. Number four, the First United Methodist Church, or Hope's Kitchen, requested $5,000. We suggested $4,500. The Four Corners Child Advocacy Center requested $5,000, and we have suggested $2,500. The Four Corners Community Band requested $1,000, and we provided, we are suggesting providing them with $1,000. Grace's Kitchen requested $5,000. We suggested 4,500. Number eight, Hospice of Monizuma requested 4,000. We suggested 2,000. The Monizuma County Senior Services requested $5,000, and we suggested $2,500. Monizuma Leadership Network requested $5,000, and we suggested $1,000. The Salvation Army requested $5,000, and we suggested $2,500. The Sexual Assault Services Organization requested $5,000, and we suggested $1,000. The Southwest Colorado Small Business Development Center requested $2,000, and we suggested $1,000. The Southwest Memorial Hospital Foundation requested $5,000, and we suggested $2,500. Tri-County Head Start requested $5,000, and we suggested $1,000. As you can see, the majority of our awards were directed towards food support for those who have food insecurity, insecurity. Second came medical support for those who are suffering from cancer and hospice services. And Community Connections is in there, along with some, probably the most frivolous, but yet I think extremely valuable, is probably the Four Corners Community Band. But we're welcome to take any questions from anyone that might have them.
I really appreciate the explanation and, and time you guys put into. It's really great. I guess my question was, the only thing I questioned, you just mentioned that with the goals you had in mind, I don't really see how the Four Corners Community Band falls in there when there's some other organizations in there that actually fall, in my mind, underneath your primary goals.
Right.
And could really benefit from that money. And I think we've given the band money really consistently, and it would be fair to give that money maybe to well- sobriety or something, something like that, that falls more under the, the, the standards that you set.
That's a really good point. And the one organization that had requested money for a well-sobriety living situation did not qualify as they were not a 401K type of an organization. They were a private organization. I think one bene, I, we did not put any money anywhere else. We have no other art-receiving organization. And I think the one benefit is that music is one thing that touches everybody across all the social spectrum. We, the $1,000 was a minimal amount that they requested, and they have been a proven recipient and contributing to the well-being of the community in general for their minimal $1,000 request. And I think that would be how I would describe it. Bill, would you like to go ahead and go?
No, I think you did an excellent job of explaining that. It would, it was very difficult because all the applications totaled to over 100, $106,000. And to make that choice of $32,000, you know, we're, we're trying to put money into some of these organizations, and if you just give them a little bit, it honestly makes no impact whatsoever. So, we spent a lot of time and, and made some tough choices.
Oh, I really appreciate that further explanation.
And I would say that even the Titanic had musicians playing. Just a joke, sorry.
I'm not against music. I just like to support sober living and other things as well.
Um, I, I think one other thing to add is just that, that the, the requests and for all, and all of the organizations are beneficial organizations for our community, and I, I would ask that the community as a whole, support the organizations outside of government in this community that help make this community work. And then, if there aren't any other questions with that, I'll make a motion. I move that council approve the 2026 Community Support Grant Awards as determined and recommended by the Grant Review Committee and authorize the mayor to sign the award letters for all grant applicants.
Second.
Randall?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Keefe Hoffer?
Yes.
Dobry?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Mayor Protam? Before you move on, I would just like to give a special thanks to Wendy Mimiaga, who collated, organized this for us, and got us, did all the checking and making sure that everybody complied with what the rules are. She's behind the scenes, and it just really, really needs our thanks and heartfelt thanks, I guess, for her hard work on this. So, thank you.
I was on that committee for two years, and I will say that Wendy was a guts, and she, she made something that would have lasted eight hours. You could handle it in two, and it's because of her hard work.
Yeah.
And so, I've got to echo that. She did a great job the last two years, and I'm sure she did it again.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number eight. Draft resolutions and ordinances? We have none. Nine, city attorney's report. We don't have a city attorney here today, so we're gonna move on to 10, city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, council, I have a, a quick report for you. I just wanted to remind you that there are three finalists for the Cortez Library Director position arriving tomorrow. They will be meeting with both senior leadership and then the library staff tomorrow afternoon, followed by a community meet and greet in this room from 5:00 until 6:30 PM. The individual interviews will then occur the next day here at City Hall, where they'll undergo a leadership panel, a community panel, and probably worst of all, me. And at what point, we hope that we have, will be able to identify a workable candidate for our library director position. I would ask and encourage all who are able to please attend the community portion of that so that we can not only show support for the process, but just how important our library is to our community. Next, we are planning to hold an informational open house on Wednesday, January 7th, 2026, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM in this room for anyone who may be interested in running for a city council seat this next year. We'll be talking about the role of the city council and the necessity, necessary commitment for the position, as well as answer any questions. All interested parties are, can begin circulating their nomination petitions on January 6th. The petitions must be turned in to the city clerk by Monday, January 26th, by 5:00 PM. But if you're even remotely interested in running for a council seat, please plan to join us. Thank you.
Could you give us that date one more time?
Absolutely. It's January 7, 2026. And then, just, I'll repeat those other important dates. January 6th is when you can start circulating or, you know, receiving nominations on your, your petition. And then, also, those need to be turned in by January 26th, but the meeting is January 7. Pardon me?
What time on January 7th?
January 7, 5:30 PM, until 6:30 or until we get tired and go home.
Okay, we'll move on to number 11, City Council Committee Reports. Member Keefe Hoffer?
Uh, the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Advisory Board met on Thursday, December 4th, and, um, let's see here real quick. We did not have any subcommittee reports. We have the forestry subcommittee and a rec user group. So, we spent the bulk of our time on the Parks Recreation Master Plan. Let's see, we are working on and are very close to finally finding a youth member, hopefully from Southwest Open School, so we hope to have that for our next meeting in January. For more or less, all the 2025 projects have been completed. Let's see. Uh, we elected a new chair, vice chair, and secretary for our group. And I will say that the meeting in January has been moved to January 8th.
Um, the library board met last week, and the primary thing we did was choose some members to be on the interview panel this Thursday. Very excited about that for the new library director. The Alana Yazi Cookbook Talk was really successful at the library, and the October Book Sell that the Friends put on over Halloween weekend, they made $472. And they haven't done that for a while, so it sounds like it was pretty successful, and they learned a lot of things that they think they could do, have an even bigger book sell next time. They're looking into doing a Valentine's Day fundraiser. And on December 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00, there is a cocoa with Santa and face painting in the library. And, um, let's see, that's all interview candidate stuff that Drew just said. But yep, the meet and greet tomorrow with the library candidates, and then interviews Thursday. That's about it.
Mayor Medina, do you have anything?
Yes, the Arts Committee is planning to be a presence, having a booth at the Third Thursdays next year, and their plan is to highlight creative projects, people and businesses in the City of Cortez, and really promote the arts economy via the Third Thursday events. Thanks.
On the 11th, I met with the Cortez Historic Preservation Board in place of Councilmember Randall. Two properties were requested to be put on the historical registry, 410 East Empire and 245 East Monizuma. One property was deemed to meet the requirements to be placed on the registry and will be brought in front of city council for review. The other property needs a little more work and investigation. The board would like to gather personal accounts and information on the Cortez CCC camp from former camp members or their family members. And the Cortez Historic Preservation Board would also like to remind relatives to advise potential buyers of properties eligible for designation as historical property.
The next Mesa Verde Country Board meeting is on Monday, the 15th.
Not a committee report, but I did attend the Futures Fair last week, and it was a very snowy day. We had great attendance with all the school districts, many booths with, with different businesses. One thing I, I wanna mention, I was extremely impressed with the presence that the City of Cortez had there. We had several tables going from the aquatic center to planning and economic development library. It was, it was just phenomenal, so that was a great event.
Dennis, real quick, I forgot to mention, I heard back from home, and I'm not gonna be able to make the special meeting next week, so if you guys want to change the day to later in the week, please do so.
I think we better set it for the 17th, or Wednesday.
Okay, council on an agreement Wednesday. If I may ask, Councilmember Dehaven, do you wanna appear remotely or just not available?
No, I won't be available.
Okay, fair enough. So, if I'm hearing council right, let's just remain with the Wednesday date?
Wednesday at 8:00.
Okay.
What time? Wednesday, the 8th?
Correct. That's, no, 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 Wednesday, the 17th. Let's be very clear here. And by the way, I already sent you all an invite to your city calendar, but it is Wednesday, the 17th, 6:00 PM in this room, and the public is, of course, welcome.
Got it. Okay, we'll move on to public participation. Uh, I don't see anybody in the audience that probably wants to participate. No? 13, other items of business. That would be an opportunity for any council member to say anything that they have burning on their minds?
I would just actually like to mention that on January 8th, I believe it starts at 4:00 PM, we will have the Third Annual Community Involvement Expo, and the whole purpose of that is to connect people who wish to volunteer for nonprofits in the community with those nonprofits. In the first year, we had around 50 nonprofits, similar last year as well, and I know that one organization, for example, was able to get 16 brand-new volunteers for their organization. So, so watch out for that. I think it's really an important part of the community, and, you know, when everybody pitches in, it really works. We have over 200 nonprofits in this county, which most people don't realize, we have a lot, and so there's a lot of need. So, if you feel like volunteering for anything in any way, shape, or form, I would really encourage you to be there that evening.
Okay, we don't have an executive session as need?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keefe Hoffer?
Yes.
Dobry?
Yes.
Medina?